Hi everyone, I'm John Shoalby, pastor of Christian Education and Discipleship at RB Community Church. And I'm glad you're here for our study, all church Bible study. Everyone's welcome here for the First Timothy study. We're in our sixth session, we're looking at chapter five. It's great to have you with us, and if you're new, if you're just joining us, please continue on. And then afterwards, when you've watched this one, you can go back to our website and look up all of the other, the other four or other five studies that we've had to catch yourself up. So no problems there, but we're glad you're here. And I've really enjoyed all the emails and calls and so forth. It's good to hear that you're watching and also the encouragement and questions that we can have and talk with together. So don't hesitate to send me something if you have a question or interest in what we've been talking about. So we're going to really, we're right in the thick of stuff here. We've got a lot of stuff going on. As I said, we're in chapter five, so we're going to get started there, but right in the midst of everything. So Paul is writing, of course, to his good friend and his mentee, Timothy, a young man, taking on a very, very heavy charge and responsibility in terms of this church in Ephesus, a very powerful, very important church in a very strategic city in the Roman Empire, and one that had some problems. And last session, of course, we kind of took a break from, Paul kind of took a break from taking, pointing out some areas of the church that needed to be improved and really spoke directly to Timothy and his ministry here. Now we're going back and he's going to begin to talk about some things that Timothy's going to have to take care of in that ministry. So, and this whole section really talks about how to treat church members and some members in particular, which I think is pretty important and I think something that we can learn as a church there as well. So grab your Bible, get ready, get a pen or pencil because you want to get your Bible all marked up like mine and be in the Word. And in that, we'll feel the power of the Holy Spirit in our lives, in our church, and we'll grow together in our relationship with the Lord Jesus and to each other and to becoming more and more like the church that God has for us. So chapter five, Paul begins by saying, "Do not sharply rebuke an older man, but rather appeal to him as a father, to the younger men as brothers and older women as mothers, and the younger women as sisters in all purity." All right, let's stop there, that first rubric and kind of take that apart a little bit. Let's look at that. Now we know that in the last session, we talked about it in chapter four, that Paul's a young, or Timothy is a younger guy. He's got a big responsibility, as I mentioned, and there was a sense that people were not taking him seriously. There weren't, because he was younger. And so remember when Paul was personally talking to Timothy, he encouraged him. And we look back in chapter four, verse 12, "Let no one look down on your youthfulness, but rather in speech, conduct, love, faith, and purity, show yourself an example of those who believe." So Paul right away says, "Timothy, you're young, but remember," and he had talked about it before, "it's not about chronological age, it's about spiritual maturity. You are spiritually mature enough to take the responsibility of directing this church, so don't worry about that." Now, how are you going to handle it? Because definitely Timothy was dealing with that issue. And we know that the, some of the problems in the church were from some of the older men in the church who were teaching things that weren't scriptural. And Timothy was going to have to confront that. And they were not going to listen to this young guy. So Paul begins chapter five by helping Timothy understand what the best approach is. And not just with these men who were having issues in the church as far as preaching and teaching, but all of the men and women and young men and so forth and young women, all of them in the church. How do you best effectively care for this church and guide them along to what they have to become and be? And so he says, "First of all, do not sharply rebuke an older man." You have to come at it with some respect, you know, you can still respect them. Yes, they may be doing some things that they shouldn't be doing, but we are not going to come down with blows, as he had said before, you know, you're not going to come out fighting. You're going to be firm though, all right, but you're going to do it in a loving way. Remember, that's kind of an overarching theme here in this epistle to Timothy. Firm in spiritual truth, but do it lovingly. And so he says, "Don't sharply rebuke someone, these older men." And of course, this is seen as all the men in the congregation, older men in the congregation. "But rather appeal to him as a father, to the younger men as brothers." And so look to them with respect, as if you were your father, you know, take it from that angle. But now, this is very interesting and I think the key word to this rubric, and I underlined it, appeal. Appeal. Now, you've got to understand that the Greek language is more expressive than the English. The English language is what we would call very wooden. In other words, when we talk in the English language, a lot of what we have to say has to be determined by the context in which we're saying it. And so for someone to understand what we're saying, it takes listening, hearing, understanding the context, listening to the inflection of the voice and so forth. And we use all of that in our communication process to figure out exactly what that person is saying to us. And that's why it's so difficult sometimes in social media with texting back and forth because the English language needs to be spoken in context. And sometimes you can't always figure out the context, you can't see the person to really figure it out. Greek is not that way. Now, it's much more expressive. In other words, the nuance of what you're saying is packed right in the Word. And I think that's very exciting. And I think that's one of the reasons that, as Paul identifies in other scripture, that it was the fullness of time. It was a time in which the common language of the Roman world was Greek. Of course, they brought Latin, Latin was the government language, but the common language, the everyday common language was Greek. And Greek is very, very expressive. And let me, for example, give you, well, let me give you an example of that. Let's take the word "love." We have the word "love" in English, and a lot of times when I say, "I love you," there has to be a context to that. If I say to my students, as I often do, "I love my students," you know, what is the context of that? My students know and they hear that in the classroom or while talking and they can figure out that what I mean is I care about my students, I want them to do the best, I want to help them and assist them and so forth, and I enjoy being in interaction with them. It's, you know, so, but they pick that up from the context, right? Otherwise, it might sound a little creepy from their professor if I were to say that, right? So, you know, that's the importance of the context. In Greek, the word "love" has four or five different meanings. And depending upon the word that you choose, it determines and helps us understand what that word means. So for example, "phileos" is a word for brotherly, sisterly, kind of friendship love, right? So if I use that as, and I would use that in the context of saying, "I love my students," then they would easily understand it because they would see that as that word. And oh yeah, okay, so he's talking about just not some creepy kind of thing with our professor, but something that is caring and concerned and so forth. Maybe even I might use the word "agape," you know, which is a sacrificial love. I'm going to sacrifice for, as all professors are sacrificing, I can tell you that right now, for their students, you know. And so they would pick that up, no problem. And so things are defined a lot easier in Greek than what we have in the English language. And the same thing here with this word "appeal." And Paul chose this word, and I believe that's the showing of the inspiration of scripture that he used this particular word, "appeal," which is related to Pericles being the Holy Spirit. So it has the same roots as the word of the spirit and the work of the spirit, and that which means to come alongside and help, right? To come alongside someone and help, to strengthen a fellow believer. That help is to strengthen them along. So when Paul used that particular word to Timothy, he was saying, "What I want you to do is approach these people as if it were your father. Come alongside them to help them in love." That's the loving part. You've got to be firm, of course, because what they're doing is wrong, but you're going to come alongside them with the idea of helping them and strengthening their faith and helping them come to a new understanding of Christian maturity. That's how you approach it. And we certainly see that we can do that. We're, you know, we should be about the work of the Spirit strengthening fellow believers. We are involved in that. We are a part, we are a part of the Holy Spirit's work in the world. And so let's look at how that works out, how this word is related into our understanding of what we need to be doing as Christians and what Timothy needed to be doing in that church. If you turn with me to Galatians, chapter six, verse 12, you'll get a feel for what, verse one and two, I'm sorry, chapter six, Galatians, chapter six, verse one and two, you get the same idea. And there, Paul writes, and we've quoted this a bunch of times, this passage, particularly for our life groups. This is where life groups become so important for our ministry. And so Paul writes there, "Brethren, even if anyone is caught in any trespass, any problem, okay, there's a sin, there's something that's separating them from God or from the church and from each other, all right, you who are spiritual," he writes, okay, you are spiritual, that's us Christians, you know, those who are in the spirit, who want to serve the Lord, who want to do the right thing, who want to be biblically based, all right, "restore such a one in the spirit of gentleness." That's how we do it, we do it in the spirit. A person needs to be restored, but we do it in the spirit of gentleness. Each one looking for yourself, you know, so that you too will not be tempted. Each one looking to themselves there. And what he's saying is, you know, "there by the grace of God, there but by the grace of God, go I." So I understand that I'm trying to correct this person, bring them back into relationship, restore them into the church, but I'm doing it in a way that I'm mindful that I'm not perfect, you know. I'm not doing this because I'm superior to them. I'm doing it because I care about them and I want them to, you know, be restored into the church and have a right relationship with God. And that is, you know, that's the key. And then two, and here's that beautiful passage that Paul writes in Galatians six, verse two, "Bear one another's burdens and thereby fulfill the law of Christ." You know, how wonderful is that, right? And that's what our small groups do, we bear one another's burdens together. Maybe there are times where we have to, in gentleness, correct or help or support or come alongside someone else. That all happens in a small group, doesn't happen in a public place. It happens in a small group where people can care about each other, where things can be held in confidence, where they can be supported and encouraged. Yeah, that all happens there in our small groups. And that is the fulfillment of the law of Christ. That's the real law that we need to be teaching. Not all the crazy stuff that was being taught in the church of Ephesus and that Timothy had to deal with, the law of Christ. Well, what's the law of Christ? Remember, Christ summarized all of his teachings and really in two things, right? Love the Lord your God with all your heart, mind, and soul, and love your neighbor as yourself. On that depend all the law and the prophets. Everything else is on those two things. And so that's how you do it. You do it in love, firmness but love and gentleness of spirit. So I think that's important. Turn over to another way that this happens, where we participate. So we participate that way with the Holy Spirit, but we also participate in a different way, and that's in Romans, chapter 15, verse four. So turn over there with me to Romans, chapter 15, verse four. And here in Paul's magnum opus, his theological work of the book of Romans, he writes, verse, chapter 15, verse four, "For whatever was written in earlier times was written for our instruction, so that through perseverance and the encouragement of the scriptures, we might have hope." Wow, how wonderful that is. He used his scripture, his scripture was the Old Testament. I've heard some people teach, not in our church, but in other places, and that, you know, oh, the early church, they didn't really have a scripture, it wasn't pooled together yet. What? Are you kidding me? Of course they did. Paul used the Old Testament, that was his scripture. And he often quoted it and preached from it and wrote from it. So the church has never been without scripture. You know, that's complete ridiculousness. No, we've always had the scripture. And here Paul writes even right there in Romans about it. You take that, the scripture, and through that you have the perseverance and encouragement of the scriptures that we might have hope. So the Holy Spirit works also through scriptures. And we join the spirit in that, in that work. And of course, that's the kind of thing that Paul wants Timothy to be doing. And he puts that all really in that one beautiful little word, "appeal." Become like the spirit, the Holy Spirit, using scripture and coming alongside people and loving them in a way that doesn't condone the sin, but also helps restore them to relationships with Christ that counts in a way. So that's how he starts out that whole chapter on dealing with church members. That's how we need to deal with church members. And it's a good thing to reflect on that and think about that for RB Community Church, all churches, you know, that you could be involved in. But particularly, of course, we're interested in our church. And so we need to have that same appeal, right? That same sense of moving and working with the Holy Spirit. And when we do that, people will grow in Christ. That's a good and important part of discipleship, is it not? Of course, yes. How wonderful it is that God gave us that ability and we have all the tools necessary to have effective work. Now he turns to some very, very important concern, not only in the church in Ephesus, but also as any church in ministry. And I think this is one that a lot of people don't even realize is there. And he turns to widows in the congregation. And verse three, he says, "Honor widows who are widows indeed. But if any widow has children or grandchildren, they must first learn to practice piety in regards to their own family and to make some return to their parents, for this is acceptable in the sight of God." All right, let's just take that for a minute. Wow, he points out one particular focus in a congregation, and that is widows and how important that is. Well, not too surprising because you have to know the history of the church in Ephesus to realize how important it is and how important it is for the greater church, not just the church of Ephesus. Some things, of course, that Paul was pointing out were specifically for that church, but other things are for the church with a capital C, you know, the whole church. And this is one of them. How important it is that we take care of widows in our congregation and every church does the same. Now, in the history of the church in Ephesus, we see that, well, let me just turn to John, the Gospel of John, chapter 19. Why don't you turn with me to find out what happened? And of course, when you get to John, chapter 19, you see that we're in the Passion Period. Jesus is on the cross, he's about to die, and he looks down from the cross and he sees two people. He sees his mother, Mary, and the disciple whom he loved, which we understand to be John. And verse 26 there, chapter 19, verse 26 and 27, "And when Jesus saw his mother and the disciple whom he loved standing nearby, he said to his mother, 'Woman, behold your son.' Then he said to the disciple, 'Behold your mother.' From that hour the disciple took her into his own household." So one of the things that Jesus did on the cross was to take care of his mother, who we believe was a widow at the time. Joseph had passed on, his father, but Mary was still alive, his mother, and he took care of her at the cross. I think that's, I think that's pretty important. Now, here's the other thing that you may not have realized, and that is that John, the disciple, whom Mary was living with then, and he took care of her like his own mother, moved to Ephesus right about after the temple, about 70 AD, when the temple was destroyed, and pastored the church in Ephesus. He was one of the pastors of church that is being written to right here in Timothy. And so having reference to how important that is, that church's ears would have perked up because they had one of the most important widows, the mother of Jesus, in their congregation. Unbelievable. And then later Paul, or later John went off into exile at Patmos, wrote the book of Revelation. And then after that, some believed that he went back to Ephesus and actually died there. And there's possibility of his grave being there, and it's the possibility of some scholars that even Mary, the mother of Jesus, passed away at the church of Ephesus and is buried somewhere along there. But anyway, the point is that was very, very important. And Jesus held that to be important, not just for the church of Ephesus, but for everyone. We need to take care of the widow and we need to take care of our parents. And so right off the bat, he writes, "Honor widows who are widows indeed." And that means particularly those who have no family to take care of them. Because the first responsibility is for parents, for widows, is the children, is the family. That's the first step of responsibility in regards to their own family, to make some return to their parents. You've got to make some return, you've got to pay them back for all the things, you know, raising you and so forth. That's respect. Well, we're mindful, of course, of the decalogue, the law, you know, this is, "Honor your father and mother." And by the way, it's one of the commandments that has the greatest promise. Your life will be long when you do that. You know, it honors God, your life will be long when you do that. How important that is to honor our parents and if there's widows, how we should honor them and how important that is, and that that's what is acceptable in the sight of God. So families first have to help out. Now, he writes in verse five, "Now she who is a widow indeed and who has been left alone has fixed her hope on God and continues in entreaties and prayers night and day." All right, important. So here is someone who, you know, particularly he's interested in widows who are serious about their faith and hold to good discipleship. In verse nine, "But she who gives herself to want pleasure is dead even while she lives." And there was a problem with some of the widows in the congregation in Ephesus. And they were preyed upon by those men who were preaching heresy in that church. And that poor preaching, that bad teaching that was going on was leading these women astray. We talked about that a couple sessions back. And Paul wants to root that out, all right? He wants to get rid of that. So be with, you know, what we need to have are good disciples, you know, willing to do the work of discipleship in the congregation. But there are some who are not doing that, and that's what has to be taken care of. Then in verse seven, he says, "Prescribe," he uses that wonderful word, which we looked at in the last session, "prescribe these things as well, so that they may be above reproach." Again, like a medicine, you know, give them that medicine so that they will be above reproach, so that their lives will be brought in line with what God has for them. Then verse eight, "But if anyone does not provide for his own, and especially for those of his household, he has denied the faith and is worse than an unbeliever." Wow, that's a pretty powerful statement from Paul. If you don't take care of your parents and you call yourself a believer, man, you know, no, no, you're just like an unbeliever then. No, part of your faith, part of your Christian faith is to take care of your parents. I don't see any other way around that scripture. I think Paul is being pretty straightforward with people and with us. And to be thinking about that, oh, I have a great responsibility to do that as part of my Christian living. And then verse nine, "A widow is to be put on the list." Now I underline that, "put on the list," what list? What are we talking about there? Hang on for just a minute, I'll get right back to it. But anyway, so there's a certain list, the churches can put this widow on, only if she is not less than 60 years old. And that was because in the culture of the New Testament era, 60 was the retirement age. So before retirement, they could get a job, they could be doing things. But those who are over that period of time, that's, you know, one of the requirements, "having been the wife of one man." Now that doesn't mean that a widow who then remarries couldn't qualify if her husband, you know, the second husband died. That's not what he's saying. And we know that he's not saying that because otherwise in verse 14, which we'll get to later, but anyway, in verse 14, he says, "Therefore, I want your younger widows to get married," and so forth goes on. But, you know, why would he say that if he knew that would then disqualify them for being helped and assisted by the church? So it's not, what he's really saying in the sense of the wife of one man, you know, not in this, not the same thing that was happening in Ephesus, but also happens in our world today. And that is people are having relationships and physical relationships outside of marriage. And he says, "No, we're not going to have that. You're going to be only with one person, the sanctity of the marriage relationship." You know, that's what's really important. The other day I was watching a television program and two of the characters were discussing that they didn't really want to get married, they didn't even want to live together. They just wanted what I guess has been called a booty call, right? You know, all right, that is completely rejected through scripture. You know, that's not the sanctity of the marriage life, and Paul is placing that here as well. No, you have to be the wife of one man, you have to be devoted to that one person. Having a reputation, verse 10, "Having a reputation for good works, and if she has brought up children, if she has shown hospitality to strangers, if she's washed the saints' feet, if she assisted those in distress, and if she has devoted herself to every good work." And that's a, you know, Paul, he loves that. He gets excited about things and he starts writing out examples. This is not an all-inclusive list. This isn't the only thing that widows could be doing in that congregation or in our congregation or whatever, that's not the point. Again, the point is the focus of being in Christ and doing what God has called you to do. That's the key thing here. And it could be any of those things or more. He's not writing down just the specific thing, but "devoting herself," as he ends, "to every good work." That's the important thing. The good work of what God calls us to. The work that has eternal consequences that last forever, that's what they need to be about. They have to have a humble servant heart to be a part. And those people who have a humble servant heart, the church needs to back up. Needs to support and encourage and give places of ministry. Wow, that's, you know, that's convicting for us, right? At RB Community Church and any church. Are we doing that? Are we having an effective ministry? You know, that's important to be thinking about and placing ourselves there. Then verse 11 says, "But refuse to put younger widows on the list." There he goes again, on the list, we're underlining that. "For when they feel sensual desires and disregard of Christ, they want to get married, thus incurring condemnation, because they have set aside their previous pledge." And that's what I've underlined, the previous pledge. So the list is really about making a pledge or what's known as a covenant with the church. In other words, there are widows who say, "Okay, I'm going to devote my life to ministry and the church is going to support and encourage and take care of these widows who have no family." All right, if you have family, then the family has the first part of that responsibility. But if not, the church follows through on that and takes care of these widows. And you make this pledge as covenant. Well, he says, "The younger ones, you know, may want to get married again." So we don't want them to make this pledge as covenant to be working in the church when they could be getting married and having a family. And then of course, their responsibility is with their family, right? Because he writes that again there, it's 13, "At the same time they also learn to be idle as they go around from house to house, and not merely idle, but also gossip and busybodies, talking about things not proper to mention." And he's talking there about that group of women who had gotten led astray, which we'll see as he ends up this rubric of the chapter, who had gotten let go, followed the wrong way because they were just idle. They weren't, just like he said in the last chapter, chapter four, we talked about it, and in other areas of our past sessions, that you've got to be that you've got to be godly, you have to be holy, and you have to be doing the things that make you godly and holy. And when you're doing that, it won't be very easy to lead you astray. But they weren't doing that. They were in busy talk and all kinds of other stuff, not paying attention. So we have to have people like that. So 14, "Therefore, I want younger widows to get married, bear children, keep house, and give the enemy no occasion for reproach." You know, focus on your family. If you get married, that's where your focus needs to be. Focus on making sure that your family is also, you know, in discipleship and so forth. So that's good. And he doesn't want them to be stuck now with having made a covenant and promise about doing certain things, when now they're not going to be able to do that. So that's important. And then 15, "For some have already turned aside to follow Satan." That's the group that did in that church. That's the heavy, you know, work that Timothy has in front of him. 16, he finishes out, "If any woman who is a believer has dependent widows, she must assist them, and the church must not be burdened, so that it may assist those who are widows indeed." And when he says widows indeed, he's talking about those who have no others, just no family to help them. You know, there's no other living relative or whatever. No, those are widows indeed, he says. And then this is interesting. Paul says, okay, other women in the congregation? It's your responsibility to make sure you connect with those people, that you care about them, that you watch over them. Women ministering to other women, how important that is. I think that's pretty unique. I think that's pretty exciting for us to be challenged with and think about in our church to say, okay, I want to take on that ministry, women to women. What an important ministry women's ministry is in the church, particularly for caring for those in need, like widows for sure. All right, a lot of good challenging stuff in that. We'll stop there. He's going to now turn back to the elders in the congregation,